Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Winslow Service Area School Town Hall meeting. And we thank you for joining us for another Town Hall meeting where we're going to provide you some updated information regarding the local area data as well as Navajo Nation, Navajo County, Coconino County. And we're also going to give you viewers some time for to submit some questions. And we would like to take time to answer your questions in regards to COVID-19 and all the precautions and protocols that we've been making. And we will provide you with some updated information regards to vaccination clinics and also COVID-19 testing. And then we have a great presentation prepared for you in regards to our mental health awareness. So, thank you for joining us. And I will go ahead and just show you the agenda. And we're going to start off with a prayer. And we'll go ahead and just bless this time. So if we could just take a moment and let's pray. Dear God, thank you for bringing us here another time together. And Lord, you know, the efforts that we are making, those of us working in public health and healthcare. You know what we're doing to take care of our communities, to take care of our people, to take care of one another. And we want to thank you for the strength that you give us every day. And also for continuing to guide us, continuing to help us in this time. And we also believe that you're continuing to heal our land and our people. And that you are going to bring us through this time continuously, Lord, and help us to keep looking to you, to keep trusting in you. That we can't do all of this on our own, but with your help, we will continue to move forward. And Lord, keep us positive and keep us unified as we work together with different entities, different healthcare facilities, different leaders among our nation, our Navajo Nation, our state. And I continue to pray for our schools, the leaders, the principals, the teachers and the students, God. We know how much they desire to be together in person. And we know, God, that you're helping us. And Lord, we pray that you would continue to help this pandemic to settle and that we would be able to see a day where we're going back to a normal way of living. But God, in this time, help us to be patient when we are becoming impatient. And help us, Lord, to continue to be loving and kind and compassionate to one another. And Lord, lead us in the right direction. And we pray over our meeting this evening, I pray over the viewers and the presenters, God. And we thank you again. And I pray all this in your name, Jesus, amen. Thank you. So, thank you again for joining us. And at this time, we're going to give the time over to Lisha Gishy, who has been the liaison for our Incident Command Team during this time of the pandemic. And then also after her, Denise Blackrock, Director of Public Health Nursing, will also provide a presentation on the most current data for Winslow Service Area. So, Lisha, go right ahead.
Hi, thank you, Sasha. All right. So, for this week, the Winslow Indian Healthcare Center COVID-19 Situational Report, updated through Tuesday, March 30th, 11:59 PM, Mountain Standard Time. So, total number of tests performed is 23,184. Total number of negative tests is 19,671. And total number of positive tests is 2,840. And those numbers are updated through Tuesday, March 30th. And reminder, that is number of tests. Our 14-day positivity rate is 3.34%, and that's updated through yesterday. Our total vaccinations administered is 12,249. And that's updated through April 11th. And currently, our COVID testing hours are 9:00 to 3:00 PM, Mountain Standard Time, Monday through Friday. And our COVID vaccination hours still remain 9:00 to 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And just to give a heads up, beginning April 27th, testing will be from 9:00 to 3:00, Monday through Friday. And vaccinations will be 9:00 to 3:00, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. But all that begins April 27th, Sasha, I'm going to get a heads up on that one. And currently, our drive-through pharmacy is 9:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday. There'll be a change to this one beginning in May. Last day for drive-through pharmacy thereafter will be inside the MLB Clinic Building. Thank you. I'll go ahead and hand it over to Sasha.
Okay, let's go ahead and have the presentation from Denise.
Hello, everybody. So, this is our Public Health Nursing Case Management Data. So, this is the cases we have case managed basically from Public Health Nursing. This includes positive cases both tested here at Winslow and also cases we received that were tested at other areas, but live within the Winslow Service Unit. So, this first graph here shows our trending by reservation communities. So, this is from the start of the pandemic to the end of this past week, up to April 11th. So, as you can see, we are doing very well. Our numbers have pretty much plateaued for all of the communities. So, there has not been much growth in any of the communities in the past couple of weeks, which is great news. And this is our graph for our border town communities. So, for Hobrog and Joseph City, we've seen, you know, it's pretty much plateaued and there hasn't been much growth. Winslow, we still get a few cases here and there. So, you can see the slight increase there, but for the most part, we're doing very well there as well. And this is the graph by age group. So, so far, the overall cases, we have case managed. We have seen the highest numbers in our 25- to 34-year-old age group, followed by the 15- to 24-year-old age group. And then the 35- to 44-year-olds. And this is our numbers by pediatric age group since the beginning of the pandemic. So, so far, we have had 529 pediatric cases, and that is 17 years and younger. So, our highest number of cases has been in our 15- to 17-year-olds, followed by our 12- to 14-year-olds. So, this is the rate of growth for those age ranges. So, as you can see, we've also seen some plateauing in the past couple of weeks, which is great news. And this is our overall case management numbers. So, these are the positive cases we've been getting in daily. So, at the height of the pandemic back in November, you know, we hit our high there. And we've been pretty much coming down since. So, we're on the downside of our curve here. So, within the past few weeks, we've had a couple of cases here and there. But I'm glad to say that, you know, the numbers have been very low. And that is all, thank you.
Thank you, Denise, for sharing that information. And also, Lisha, for sharing the most up-to-date information regarding our services here at Winslow Indian Healthcare Center. And that's great news that our positivity rate is down to below 4% at this time. But we still have people coming to get tested. We still have people that are positive cases. But we're very thankful that the numbers is much lower than it was. So, we are in this together. So, thank you for sharing that. And now, we're going to hear from the data from Navajo Nation. And we will give the time over to Mr. Deliazi.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I hope you can see my screen. If not, please let me know.
We can see it.
Okay, good. So, I'm going to quickly provide a brief overview on our latest Gini Measures from March 26th through April 8th. It's a two-week time period. And so, just very quickly, is that one of our Gini Measures is looking at the cases and the trend over time. You see these two curves. The blue line is the US cases throughout the pandemic since last March 2020 to April 8th of 2021, which is last Thursday. So, you see the, you know, our Navajo Nation line is the orange one. See our first initial wave? We experienced all the way going back to last May is when we peaked for our first wave of May 2020. Then we went down, and then we went back up on our second wave throughout last fall. And we went through some tough times in November, December and into January. And then since January, we've been going down. And so, we are now at this point, and as of last Thursday, we've been seeing this little increase or rise in our curve. We're no longer continuing on this downward trend. We're actually just based on the last 14-day time period. We've been seeing some, a little bit of an increase in cases. So, that's why you see this little upward trend for the past two weeks. So, we'll continue to monitor that as we move forward. So, hopefully, it doesn't continue to go up, but we'll see. Again, this is the latest curve from, this one just shows from January 1st, 2021, to April 8th, last Thursday. So, as you can see too here, it's beginning to go up a little bit. And again, we'll continue to monitor that as we go into this week and into the next week. So, this is the latest numbers, our map. I'm sorry, it's gray. And it's not very colorful, but this is the way our leadership wants to, for us to present this. It's, as you can see, the four corner states, Colorado, Utah, Arizona, New Mexico, Colorado. And this darker shaded gray is the one with the over 100 average new daily cases per 100,000 in the last seven days. So, they're seeing the most increase in cases around our border states is Colorado. And Utah, Arizona, and New Mexico are seeing cases as well, but not as significant as Colorado. So, Colorado is a border state that we're continuing to monitor our risk level of COVID. So, as far as the service areas on Navajo Nation, Tubus City, Shiprock and Crown Point have seen some increase in cases the past. This is actually seven days from April 2nd to April 8th. So, we've been seeing some cases over in the Tubus City Service Area, Shiprock and Crown Point as increasing. So, Winslow, your particular service area remains this lighter shaded gray, which is the 50- to 59, I'm sorry, the 10- to 49 shaded area. So, it's not as bad as Tubus, Shiprock and Crown Point. So, that's good. And in the last seven days, we've seen 90 cases from April 2nd to April 8th. So, previous week was 67. So, it did increase by 23 cases. So, we are seeing some increase in cases past seven days. This is the vaccine numbers comparing US to Navajo Nation. Navajo Nation has administered 87% of the doses distributed, whereas the US has 80% of the administered doses that were distributed throughout the US. So, we are doing very well with our vaccine administration throughout Navajo Nation. So, and then this is just a bar chart that shows incidence rates within the past seven days from April 2nd to April 8th. And this is, the red bars are the Colorado, Utah, New Mexico and Arizona and Navajo Nation. We're down here. We did go up by like five. We were down here the last second, but we've gone up by like five places. So, just due to our increase in cases a little bit. So, but we're still doing better than the four border states in our area. And this is across the US. I know this is not Navajo Nation, but our neighboring jurisdictions, like throughout the US. You see these red states. Colorado is a border state, as you all know, is a, remains a concern for us in the region. So, and then this is by counties. If you look around in our area, the only red parts that we're really concerned about is this red area. This is La Plata County, up by Farmington and Aztec and Kirkland and Water Flow areas that are, you know, neighbors to La Plata County and Colorado. So, we'll continue to monitor that as well. And then the variant, as you all have probably heard about the variant situation throughout the country and also within our region again, on our Navajo Nation, we have identified two variants. One is the B.1.1.7, which is the UK or the England variant within the Tubus City Service Area. The other one, last week, we identified is this B.1.4.29, which is the California variant that was identified in the Chinley Service Area. So, we have two cases that are, you know, affiliated with these two variants on the nation currently. And we're continuing to monitor this as well. But our bordering states have all identified the UK, New England variant, as well as South African variant, as well as the Brazil, Brazilian variant. So, it is around us, and we have two variants we've identified on the nation up to this point. And we're continuing to monitor that going forward. And so, our numbers are, you know, we're in the, current numbers tell us that we are in the, will remain in the orange, the orange level based on our beginning metrics currently. So, plus the variant, the two identified variants in our nation is a, continues to be a bit of a concern, but we'll continue to monitor that going forward. So, that's my, that's our update on Navajo Nation as a whole, plus our neighboring jurisdictions and some numbers nationally. So, I'll stop here. Sasha, thank you.
Thank you very much, Del.
Yeah.
For your presentation updates. And, you know, there's a lot of changes from the last time we met back in March. And this is great to hear how we're doing now among the Navajo Nation. Now, we're going to hear from Coconino County. We have our epidemiologist, Matt Maurer, who's going to do his presentation and share the information regarding Coconino County. And just to kind of give you a heads up, at the end of the data presentations, after Navajo County presents, we're going to take a few minutes to answer any questions you might have. So, go ahead and put that into the chat box, our comment section, if you would like any questions answered. So, go ahead, Matt Maurer, give you this time.
Thank you, Sasha. For Coconino County, we had been seeing a steady decrease in cases. We got down to about 62 total cases for the county for a one-week time period, about four weeks ago. And then since then, we've been seeing a steady increase. And it's up to, two weeks ago, we doubled that amount. Two weeks ago, we were at 120. And so far, for last week, data's not totally set there yet. We're above that at 133. So, we've doubled our number of cases over the last three weeks. Still tracking all that. The majority of the increased numbers are coming from, increased cases are within Flagstaff. Most of the increase, all the other areas are staying very much the same. Tubus City, Williams, other areas within Coconino County are staying aged right around the same numbers. But Flagstaff is seeing an increase in the age group that we're seeing that increase is primarily the 18- to 24-year-olds. And then we did have a slight increase in the school age at a couple of instances within FUSD that we were able to communicate and isolate and quarantine everybody. And then, and then also among our 25- to 44-year-olds, as far as two weeks ago go, we saw an increase there with that, those age groups. So, still, everything else is relatively steady. Checking on those increases, communicating to those groups, really trying to put out any outbreaks that we're identifying. As our vaccinations going well, we have appointments in all, at all the places that are providing vaccines throughout the county. So, please continue to get vaccinated. Please, 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 continue to get vaccinated as we continue to fight this virus. The variants that we're seeing, as Del had recapped, for the county as a whole, for Coconino, just eight of that UK variant, the B.1.1.7. We've seen a few additional cases of, as Del mentioned, that California variant. And in talking with some of the genetic laboratories for Coconino County, it's thought that that might become more dominant in our area, those California variants. However, right now, we're not seeing any sustained transmission of any variants of concern. So, just everybody's aware, no sustained transmission of any variants of concern. And I think that's the update I have for you, unless there's any questions. So, thank you.
Thank you for that update, Matt. Thank you very much. And we will give time in case there's any questions, we'll let you know. Let's go ahead and go on to our Navajo County presentation by Janelle Lynn, who is the Navajo County Health Director. Go ahead, Janelle, we'll give you this time.
These are just some of our current numbers. Navajo County to date had 15,998 cases. 6,771 of those have been worked by our Navajo County Public Health Nurses. We've had six new cases in the last 24 hours and five new households that we've added to our monitoring list. We are consistently seeing low numbers. Some days, we're getting zero new cases reported. We, here are our tribal cases as far as they've been reported to us. Navajo Nation and White Mountain Apache Tribe will both report to us again on Wednesday. So, these are as of last week. And we haven't heard updates from Hopi Health Center in quite some time. We're currently monitoring only 37 households, which we're really happy with that, and have released to date 6,384 households from isolation. We've had our deaths for Navajo County are 523, and 171 of those are off tribal lands. We've had 1,639 hospitalizations, and 478 of those have been off tribal lands. And to date, 612 of our non-tribal cases have been directly linked to schools. Here's our current EpiCurve. We have, are consistently, like I said, seeing those low numbers. It was most recently updated on April 10th, and we only had three new cases that day. One of the things that we are watching, and I'll talk about it a little further along in the presentation, is the fact that we are near our 90-day mark or right at from the peak of our last surge in cases. Rates per 100,000 were last updated on March 28th. At that time, our rate per 100,000 was 51 over, per 100,000, or substantial spread for Navajo County. But at the 4.5% positivity rate, it's going to be lower than that now. We're just, that's the most recent data we have. And we haven't had an update on our COVID-like illness. We're not really tracking that as much now that our numbers are so low. This is just, has already been covered in Del's presentation, but the situation and picture for variant strains, I won't spend a lot of time on that. He already covered that for you. Vaccination rate comparisons for Navajo County, this is Navajo County as a whole. Sorry, I forgot to update my date here. It's, I actually updated that this morning, forgot to change that piece. For Navajo County as a whole, 37,931 vaccines have been administered. 23,778 of those are first doses, and 16,172 of those are completed series. So, we have about 36% of our population who has been vaccinated for Navajo County. Here's just kind of a visual picture of Navajo County vaccine efforts. Our climb still continues. We're still steadily creeping up the vaccine scale. We were increasing a percentage point or two a day, and that has slowed way down. In Navajo County, vaccines are open to everyone, 16 and older for Pfizer and 18 and older for Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson. Our facility partners are reporting hard time finding enough people to be vaccinated. We've moved into that stage where we have more vaccine than we have interest in being vaccinated. We're really happy with our numbers for vaccinating at-risk and minority populations. These are our vaccine rates post-COVID infection. This is for non-tribal cases. We're going back and surveying our past cases to see how many of them have chosen to be vaccinated. And we're seeing that a very high percentage so far, 54% of those who have had a previous COVID infection have chosen to not be vaccinated. We have 29% who have at least, who are fully vaccinated and 2% who are in the process of finishing up their vaccine series. This is a little concerning to us from the perspective that with 36% of Navajo County being covered from vaccine coverage. And during our last surge, about 30% of our overall population for Navajo County was infected with disease, and they have been covered by natural immunity. However, the 15th of April is when we will hit the 90-day mark from the peak of our surge. So, we are now in that period where 90 days after infection, people's immunity starts to wane. And we are concerned that we really need to encourage this population to consider being vaccinated. So, we are designing a lot of our messaging and campaigns right now, pleading to the individuals who were previously infected with COVID to please consider being vaccinated. I think this is what's largely contributing to our low disease rates is that we've had good immunity coverage from the combination of vaccine and natural immunity. But as natural immunity wanes, we put ourselves at risk for a possible third surge. So, we're just asking our citizens to please be responsible and consider being vaccinated to keep protecting themselves and our community. And that's the end of my presentation today.
Thank you, Janelle, for that update regarding Navajo County. And we're going to go ahead and open up this time and take a few moments. We are watching the Facebook comment section. And we invite you, community, parents, school leaders, school employees, if you have any questions, any comments to make, now's the time. And we would be glad to take a few moments to answer your questions or your comments. We have our epidemiologists and our public health professionals on that would be glad to take any questions or comments. So, we're going to be watching the Facebook Live feed. So, go ahead and ask. And then if you are on the WebEx meeting and would like to ask some questions, now's the time. And while we're waiting for questions to come in, I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and provide some brief reminders and just kind of some encouragement. It's been a little over one year since we entered the time of this COVID-19 pandemic. And boy, have we learned a lot, and we've come a long ways. And, but we can reflect over our year and look back at the many, the different experiences we've had that we've never had to go through before, and even a new norm that we've had to start to live. And then just being there for our children, being there for our families and finding ways to continue to connect. So, some of our brief reminders that we have is that we would still like to encourage our communities, just as our public health colleagues have expressed. just as our public health colleagues have expressed, that, you know, we still have COVID-19 positive cases weekly, and we're not at a 0% yet at all. And now we're keeping track of these new variants. So COVID-19 prevention and precautions are still very important. Good hand washing, wearing your mask, and physical distancing, being safe in public areas. And this is the type of education that I have been providing as I assist with the curbside COVID vaccine clinics and just sharing with our patients that we still like them to wear their mask, be safe, do everything you've been doing from the very beginning. It's the only way that we can continue to keep these numbers low. So keeping in mind that we have been working with the schools. I, we have, Windsor Indian Healthcare Center has a school health task force that has been in contact and partnering with the schools and different efforts and helping them with COVID-19, what they call mitigation, how we can control the spread of COVID-19 within the school community. So we have shared different protocols and educational material that the schools are able to share with the parents. But one of the things we want to ask, you continue to not send your child to school or any activities if they're not feeling well. And even if they have had any exposure to somebody who has been sick with COVID-19, it's very important that we don't send them to school or to any activities as to protect other, other families. And of course, when we wear our mask, we want to continue to make sure it's a well-fitted mask and, and that we're wearing them correctly and remind our children to do so. And we want to continue to tell them not to be touching their eyes, nose, and mouth, and keep their hands clean. And we're all in this together. That's been one of our encouragement messages that we're trying to get out there is that we're in this together. And we want our children to stay in person, in school, in the border towns, in the Navajo Nation. We're praying and hoping for a time that the students can go back into the schools on the Navajo Nation, but we have to work at it together in order to achieve that, that time. And so we're looking ahead to the fall next school year. But in this time, we're just providing this meeting so that we give you time to hear the updated data. And we are listening to your feedback through the surveys. And that's why, you know, we continue to have these data presentations because majority of our viewers have expressed that they really like that information. And so looks like we don't have any questions or comments through our Facebook page. And so, but we will provide an email address. And also, there is the survey link that we invite you to take a look at and answer those questions for us. That will be really helpful. So, and then this, this meeting is recorded. So if you know somebody who probably missed it, let them know. It'll be on the Facebook page. It's gonna be on the Windsor Indian Healthcare Center website and also YouTube. And so just, we, we just encourage you to keep one another up to date on what's going on at this time. And so right now, I'm gonna give the time over to our substance abuse suicide prevention coordinator. And she's gonna be giving a presentation on mental health awareness because one of the things we are finding in this time, even though it's been a year that we've been through this, there are a lot of long-term effects that people are experiencing, families are experiencing. And we just want to be a resource, a support, a help to you. And so Alicia has put together a presentation for you. So stay tuned and let us know if you have any questions or comments. So Alicia?
Hi, thank you, Sasha. Appreciate the introduction. All right, so as Sasha, Sasha mentioned, we're doing a quick overview of mental health awareness. We've learned past couple of weeks, especially in the past couple of weeks, about stress, anxiety, even terms of depression. So we've come up with a bunch of different ways to reach out to schools, staff, school staff, working staff, and to reach them. So this is one of many presentations that we, our program does offer. So just a little disclaimer, this present, presentation is intended for educational purposes only. Let's go through some data really quick just to give a, a bigger perspective of suicide and under-revisionation through the Navajo Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which was conducted in 2017. And this is for middle school. So to read this matrix, begin with the question in the far left, then the questions in the subsequent columns. For, for example, 57.2% of middle school students seriously, who seriously thought about killing themselves, also made a plan about how they would kill themselves. Okay, the next column far left would be 86.2% of middle school students who ever made a plan about how they would kill themselves. They seriously thought about killing themselves. So it goes all the way across the board, and that's for middle school students. Okay, Navajo Youth Risk Behavior Survey for high school, the 2017 data for high school. So again, same way, 47%, or I'm sorry, 49.2% felt sad or hopeless for at least two consecutive weeks in the past month. They can, they considered suicide in the past 12 months. So they, for two consecutive weeks, of those two consecutive weeks, they did consider suicide in the past 12 months. Okay, and same, 42.6% felt sad or hopeless for at least two consecutive weeks, and they also made a plan in the past 12 months. And same column on the left, those that felt sad or hopeless in the last, in their, in at least two consecutive weeks, 37.0% attempted suicide at least once in the past 12 months. And again, that same left column, those that felt or felt sad or hopeless at, for at least two consecutive weeks, 12.8% injured themselves in the suicide attempts and attempt in the past 12 months. So these numbers are very alarming. I can go through each column. But due to time, I just wanted to share that, those, these numbers really quick. Again, this is from the Navajo Youth Risk Behavior Survey for 2017, survey that was conducted. Okay, one more slide about data. This is a 2017 youth risk behavior surveillance survey of high school Navajo and state comparisons. So the first column, Navajo Nation. And the question was felt sad or hopeless. So Navajo Nation was above all the other US, all US Native American, Arizona, New Mexico, and Utah. And so 37.4% were, were above all the other comparisons. So the ones I really want to highlight is seriously considered suicide, 23%. Were, were way above the rest of the, the state and New Mexico states and Utah made a suicide plan, 21.1%. Attempts, attempted suicide, 19.5%. And a suicide attempted result and an injury that inquire, required medical attention, 6.7%. So these three here are higher than the rest of the surrounding states, including the country. And stress, so understanding stress, what it is, will help us respond and cope better to, to a variety of things that happen on a day-to-day basis. The stress is a, a feeling of emotion or physical tension. It can come from any event or thought that makes you feel frustrated, angry, or nervous. Stress is your body's reaction to a challenge or demand. In short bursts, stress can be positive, such as when it helps avoid danger or meet a deadline. And how do we respond to stress, especially during this pandemic? Parent being a teacher at times, parent working full-time, and coming home, being the teacher. So it's quite, it can be quite overwhelming and stressful. And, and this is where in the comment section, feel free to, to leave a comment and share one word, what your current stressor is. Do you have a current stressor at the moment? Most of my, or one word I can share, my stressor is time. From five to bedtime, it's, it just flies. So time would be mine, my stressor in the evening. And finding the stress-reducing techniques that works for you is an important, as important step in decreasing emotional symptoms of stress. Over time, you find that you resolve against, your resolve against stress becomes stronger and that your symptoms improve. However, if you find that you're struggling to handle the emotional aspects of everyday stress, it may be best to reach out to a mental health professional. Now, keep in mind that stress can also have negative effects on your physical health. It's important to help to stay in best shape, both emotionally and physically. And we'll go over some examples later on here in this presentation. So again, if you want to share at least one word in the comment back box, what your current stressor is, that would be appreciated, just to express your stress. So the pandemic stress, this can be a whole separate thing to a new kind of stress. It can be stressful to be separated from others. If you have or were exposed to COVID-19, each person ending a period of home isolation may feel different about it. Some of the words that we kept hearing over and over for over a year now was isolation, quarantine, stay six feet apart, stay home, wash your hands, you know, wear masks, social distancing, you know, all those different words, especially the ones where we had to stay by ourselves, like isolation and quarantine. We weren't used to those words. They were new to us, and staying away from family, we had to adjust and adapt our mind. Our mind went through stress to, to that, to COVID-19 pandemic. And emotional reactions may include mixed emotions, including relief when we're released from that quarantine or isolation date. You know, we come out feeling relieved and we can breathe, it feels like. And we can see other faces other than a text or someone on the phone. We can actually see a person, a live person. Fear and worry about your own health and the health of your loved ones. So family members that had COVID or they had to isolate and quarantine, we took them meals, we took them supplies or other things. We were worried. So that was one way to express our, our, our love and care for them was to take things and help them out in different ways. And stress from experiencing, experience of having COVID-19 and monitoring yourself or being monitored by others. You're, at times, you're alone in your room and you're monitoring yourself, taking, checking your own temperature. Contact tracing gives you a call. They're being monitored. You're mo, you're being monitored by others to report back to see if you're okay. And so those are other messages about contact tracing was to always the answer that call in case you got a phone call from Windsor Indian Healthcare Center Public Health Nursing Contact Tracing Team. And it was just a lot sometimes, being overwhelmed of answering those questions. But those were there for a purpose to help slow down the spread of COVID-19. Sadness, anger, or frustration become, because friends or loved ones have fears of getting the disease from you, even though you're not clear to be around others, or you are clear to be around others. You know, there's still that trauma, that not understanding of, you can't be COVID. I mean, get released from isolation and quarantine without spreading. And there's still some that are not understanding, they're, therefore, they're angry or they're sad or they, they maintain your distance or they don't want to see you. And possibly guilt, not being able to perform normal work hours or parenting duties while you had COVID. I, I know from here at work, my, my experience from being quarantined, that was one of them, was, oh, who's gonna do the situation report? Who's gonna do the daily sit report? Those types of things that I was in charge of as liaison officer and getting on all these different types of meetings, you know. But it was covered, you know, it was covered by coworkers and stuff. So there, there is that. For, for me, I went through that as well. Worrying about getting reinfected or sick again, even though you've already had COVID-19 and understanding that you, there's a possibility that we can, and one can get infected again. So that's why Sasha keeps telling us, wear a mask. You know, we still see on TV, here on radio and whatnot, wear your mask. Wash your hands, maintain that social distance. So it's still there. It's possible. So, and other emotional mental health changes, increase of stress, anxiety, depression, worry-ness, all of that. So it's a mix. It's an emotional reaction, emotional roller coaster that the pandemic has caused us to go through and experience. So different kinds of stress. There's good, I mentioned before and for a couple of sites back, there's the good and the bad stress. So activities that may elicit or produce productive stress. So trying something outside your comfort zone. Setting a challenging goal around your interests. Traveling somewhere new and exciting, meeting new people, engaging in physical activity, learning a new skill, starting a new job. So all of these different types of things, and there's many more. These are just examples that can provide or produce the good stress. And they're excited to go somewhere new, to get to travel somewhere, you learn a new skill. And then a different kind of stress, some stress can be problematic when it is prolonged or seemingly uncontrollable and can result in unwanted changes to our physical and mental health. Unmanaged problematic, problematic stress can take a toll on our neurological and hormonal responses that are necessary for keeping our bodies and mind in balance. So when we're stressed, we tend to have different outlets. So for example, food is one of mine. You know, I tend to eat a more on the unhealthy side. You know, a little bit of candy here, a little bit of fast food here and there. So I tend to go to food as one of my stress outlets. And that's where keeping our bodies in a healthy way, it's, that's not a good way to keep it healthy. So there's different ways that we need to learn, a new skill, engaging in physical activity. And hormonal changes, when we're stressed, our hormones change in our bodies. It, it, it tends to cling more. What you eat, it, it sticks to our body. You don't want to make that, help that stress to stay in your body and build a home. You want to release it. And so other kinds of stress, the productive stress may increase focus, provide product, productive energy. Stress may increase motivation. Stress may be experienced as an excitement. Stress may feel manageable. Stress may feel, may build confidence. Stress may improve performance. The flip side to these, of course, stress may decrease focus. Stress may intensify pro- Stress may intensify procrastination. Stress may be experienced as fear. Stress may feel overwhelming. Stress may be build insecurity. Stress may impair performance. So these are different kinds of stress that affect us, including hormonally too. So stress, some stress can be mitigated by engaging in self-care activities and habits, while some stress will need additional support. So this is a short diagram here of yes and no. So let's go through the yes. Is there a specific issue on your mind, such as an upcoming exam? Worry about finances, or maybe a fight with someone, you know, yes? Does the feeling go away once the issue is resolved? Yes. This may be temporary stress. Time to find coping strategies that will work for you. If things don't get better, then it's time to reach out for help. And we'll go through one no. So same thing, is there a specific issue in your mind? No. Have you experienced any physical symptoms such as sweating, breathing, difficulties, mus, muscle tension, chest pain, irritability, teariness, fatigue, or insomnia? And you could say, yes, this may be something more serious than stress, time to reach out for help just in case. And I got this from Active Minds Thought Resources. So this is one thing that I found that I thought was helpful in case, for other examples, especially for body symptoms. And moving on to resiliency. So we keep hearing about resiliency, stay resilient, be resilient. So I wanted to go over a little bit into, a little bit, and dissect that more to what that means. Because there's different ways to be resilient. So what is resiliency? A person to withstand or recover quickly from difficult conditions. Resilience is made up of five pillars: self-awareness, mindfulness, self-care, positive relationships, and purpose. And examples, other examples include weak grades, our students, our kids working on their grades, you know, that's getting good grades, that's a way to be resilient. Language, learning, learning our Navajo language, traditions, spiritual, religious, traditional ceremonies, learning our clans, our ancestry clans, or for our mother and our father. So those are different ways of being resilient. And so in the comment section, feel free, again, to express what is your way of being resilient? Is there a special way that you help withstand or recover quickly from any situations like stress? You know, there's images here that I thought could be helpful with these examples, you know, tradition ceremonies, your foundation here, you know, you're withstanding the situations or life situations coming at you, you're withstanding it and blocking it, you're mitigating the situations. So again, a comment box, feel free to leave your comment and how you are resilient. So coping with stress and helping your mental health. I've listed five things that could help. Have a self-care plan that prioritizes your mental health. Caring for your mental health may look different than others. We're all different, we're not all the same, we all like different things, so being different is okay. Set healthy boundaries to protect your mental well-being. It's okay to feel both love and loss. It's not okay, or it's okay to be okay. Again, it's okay to not be okay. So if you like, you can leave a comment, again, in the chat box of your coping, coping mechanism, you know. I mentioned before that your coping strategies are fit for you. You know, you can, I can give you ideas, or other people can give you ideas, but you can find the one that works for you. So this one talks about reflect, connect, and support. Especially the reflect is a huge one for me. So the COVID-19 pandemic caused us to expand or enhance our mind, personality characteristics in different ways, such as it basically demanded to, demanded us to learn online. You know, all of our meetings are online now, our education, our lessons pretty much is all online, so it, it enhanced our learning skills to be online, enhanced reading and listening skills, expanded and to build a network, new connections, subjectmatic experts. Some of us created a Facebook account or some type of social media account to reconnect or connect with the outside world. It forced us to communicate with our family members, extended family, or even coworkers that we haven't talked to, or we haven't met even extended family members. So that, it helped us connect, reconnect with people, self-reflection of self. And that's where I've, I've connected with myself in many different ways through the pandemic. Everyone who has bereaved in the last year, you know, reflecting of all the family losses and people we've lost and so forth, so reflect, reflecting, connecting, supporting those families and individuals. Physical, mental, emotional, spiritual well-being. Some of us had to pull back the curtain of our emotional life. Before the pandemic, we didn't really have to express a lot, you know, because everything was just fast, go, go, go. But now the pandemic has slowed us down a lot, and it pulled up the curtain to look back on ourselves emotionally. For some of us, COVID-19 has heightened my emotional response. And like I said, it expanded and enhanced my mind and personality, even character to think and slow down and give an emotional or think about emotional result that we're human. Yeah, the pandemic and my subsequent breakdown taught me how to ask for help. I've learned that I don't have to do everything alone. You know, I can ask for help when I need it, and ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, you know, someone is going to help. Yeah. Okay, so next slide, my wellness corn. So if you have a sheet of paper, handy, any size, just want you to draw four lines on there, kind of like a, a criss, a cross. And on top, right, emotional wellness, on the top left box, emotional wellness. The right top box, spiritual wellness. The bottom left, physical wellness, and the bottom right, mental wellness. And draw three lines under each one. And number one, write down your past emotion. Number two, your current emotion. And number three, the last line is, will be your future emotion, and that's where you would like to be through, maybe this year. You can make it a goal for through this year of how you want to be feeling constantly. Current emotion is now, of course, past this, same past year, you know, that most memory that you have of your emotion. That's just one activity that you could do to, to reflect back and connect with yourself. And some resources to support yourself or other family members that you may know. There's some, of course, our Behavioral Health Program here at Winslow, the Navajo Nation Department of Behavioral Mental Health Services. They do have an after hour number, this resilientarizona.org, and they have text capabilities to two-on-one. And of course, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service eight-hundred number, and the National Suicide Prevention eight-hundred number, and you could, they also have a text capability too. And it says to, for a text, crisis text line, but I learned that you could text to chit-chat if you need to talk to someone, it's, it's completely confidential and free. So you do not have to be in a crisis to call or text, and again, it's confidential and free. And our, our Facebook will have this resource listing posted in the chat box as well. We just want to share, this is a lot of listings and phone numbers of resources that you could make connections with and support yourself or someone that you know of. And there's different websites as well. So again, our Facebook comment box should have this in there, and you could download it and save it or screenshot it. Okay? Thank you. And these are my resources for my presentation. And thank you. Thank you very much for logging on with us and again, strong resilience, stay resilient as much as you can. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alicia, for that presentation and all the different information you provided to our communities, to our people, and even the activities, and it's very important. And one of the things we learned, and many of us have learned in this time, is that when we're impacted greatly and mentally, it affects every other area of our life. It affects our physical health, and it even, we're a healthcare facility, and we're always encouraging people to take good care of themselves. And one of the things that we realize is that our patients are affected mentally and emotionally greatly during this time. And with that, it is going to affect the way they care for themselves, the way maybe they eat, whether, maybe how active they might be. And so it's, it's important, and we see that as healthcare workers, that it's important to, to think about these things for yourself, to be aware of it. And that way you can reflect and know what might need to be changed, or what you might need to work on. And, and if you need to ask for help, there, reach out to someone who can help you, whether it's help with motivation. If you're having issues with anxiety or depression, those are very real these days, and we want you to be able to reach out and ask for help. So the resources are available to you. And we just wanted to make sure that we provide you with as much information as we could. We do have our Behavioral Health Services that are providing counseling. And then we have resources for spiritual care for our patients. If you have questions about that, contact us. We have that information as well. So thank you for, for joining us this evening, and we didn't have that many questions, and so but we do want to make sure that we give you the opportunity to give us your feedback. Again, like I had shared before, this is for you. This is for your, your, for you to let us know how we can get information to you regarding this time, whether it's about the, the COVID, the vaccines, or our services here. Complete the survey. We have an email address, schoolhealth@windsolianhealthcarecenter.org. And also our next school's Windsor Service Area Town Hall Meeting is May tenth. And we have twenty-four school sites in this service area that we reach out to, we partner with, and so this is for all of you. Reservation schools, border town schools, we have private schools, so just, this is for you. So thank you again for your time, and we will see you at the next town hall meeting. Thank you to all the presenters for everything you're doing to, for being committed to joining us and helping us in this time. Thank you for being here with us. So thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.